Uh, roll call, uh, Councilman Bennett here. Councilman Bolt here. Councilman Perry here. Councilman Stewart.
President.
Councilwoman Walker.
Here.
Vice President Bruce. President Hall.
Here.
There.
Heavenly Father, we gather here today as leaders instructed with the well-being of our community. We ask for your divine presence to be with us in this council meeting. Guide us with wisdom to make decisions that are just and compassionate. Help us to listen to one another with open hearts and seek the common good above all personal interests. Guide our discussions that they may be productive and respectful. Inspire us to serve with integrity and humility and to act at faithful towards other resources. And trust placed in our hands. And our work here today contribute to a community that is prosperous, peaceful, and filled with hope. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just adjourned from an executive session to discuss personnel issues. Is there any announcements anyone would like to make? He's not recording this, but that's just like her tonight. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I have several things actually. Um, in all, um, somewhere over the month of October. October the fourth is going to be something senior health fair. October the thirteenth, um, there will be a state planning at the H. St. United Methodist Church. October the eighteenth, there will be a, that we've got talent night. Place to be determined, we have not decided on location as of yet.
What's that?
Eighteenth.
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 Talent show.
Talent show. And then on the twenty fifth, it will be a youth mental health event. Um, that event will probably be held at Light House Hall. As well as, I'm sorry, the, uh, senior health fair also will be at Light House Hall.
What about the talent show as well?
We haven't decided on place yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, and, um, the veterans' luncheon will be November the sixth.
What luncheon?
The veterans' luncheon.
Veterans' luncheon.
There's a veterans' luncheon November sixth, um, at Joe T. Hall. Um, live will be forthcoming, um, we share a live with individuals, those who are interested, and they can offer this space. Good evening.
Thank you. Chief, would you like to, um, say something about National Night Out?
Um, I'm sorry, trying to. Uh, National Night Out was great, uh, Mr. Wiley was very helpful with the program. Um, uh, Kathy Crissack was very helpful with the program. Uh, Angel Clark was very, uh, helpful with the program. We had some people that donated, so we didn't mention this because she was donating funds. And the folks that donated came out and, and ran some of the events forward, so it was definitely, uh, renewable for us. We've been on National Night Out for a while, but I think we, we're gonna set a standard. We said next year we have a problem, we're gonna try to do a little bit better next year, right? And there was also a lot of services for residents. There was like tug of friends and bikes that were handed out, there was some clothes that were getting changed now. And there's also some food. So I think it was an all-around good event. It seemed to me like everybody was happy.
Food trucks were really good that were there as well?
Yes.
And the, um, the hit of the day, I think, was the face painting with the Eagles tattoos. Sorry, sorry to say, guys. There was a lot of Eagles.
It wasn't dumb.
All right. But we want to thank everyone for coming out. It was a great event. I think every one of us that were there enjoyed it. Um, I know I saw Randy there, I think so Mr. Fannin there, and Rachel, Bill. We all had a good time. Hopefully you saw it come out soon. Right, any union updates?
I'm listening.
Um, there is a Teamsters meeting on the twenty seventh, the twenty eighth, sorry, the twenty eighth of August. Uh, yes, uh, to go over that, um, the last FOP meeting that we were supposed to have was canceled. On the twentieth of July from the FOP. We're working on getting more dates for those. Unfortunately, we don't have.
Then you submit six dates to them and they, they couldn't accommodate any of them, and then we had asked them for multiple dates, and that's where we are still waiting for their reply.
We are waiting on them to provide us some dates in time.
Um, as we were told earlier this year, apparently the FOP is dealing with a lot of contracts all at one time. So I think that's what's causing the scheduling conflicts. You both have anything else?
With the Teamsters, does that mean the agent?
Yes.
Anything else?
Does the FOP, you know, because we're now what, seven months without a contract with the FOP? Are they looking to take us to arbitration?
No, because we've been trying.
Okay.
They can't hold us so tall that they can't. Our upcoming public meetings are on September eighth at sixteen, we'll have an executive meeting, and September, we'll have our regular scheduled council meeting. We do not have any presentations tonight. Um, I don't believe you have any behind the scenes. Oh, um, I guess behind the scenes, chief, would you like to explain, um, could be S, is it BMSC?
Yeah, so, uh, last month we talked about all the municipalities are trying to get ALS service. So originally the borough was looking for some other municipalities, and it would have been a hundred thousand dollars for the municipality to have ALS service. Uh, so I was asked to see if I could find something cheaper. So the company that provides ALS for City of Chester, they, they provided us two options. One is they take over the billing for the fire company. They have the surcharge of sixty percent, and they bill two fifty for ALS service. Although that was better, I thought, I thought we could do better. Um, so I was able to reach out, uh, to some folks in county, and they were able to come up with, uh, other arrangements. Where the N.S.C. would take over the billing for sixty percent. Fire company will get the billing money for ALS on the six percent. And ALS would be five to six percent at a sixty forty split, sixty billing for fire company, forty billing to the ALS provider. And it shared risks, so if they go for ALS, they can get ALS marketing. Okay, it's a deal for us. However, it's the fire company's license that we're dealing with now, and I give them a copy of those agreement, and they're doing their process to figure out. So we can still apply ALS service. We're trying to do it as fiscally as possible.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions on that?
Chief, the arrangement that we currently have with the fire company, where we do a fifty fifty split on billing. Is that going to change as part of this agreement, or are we still, as the municipality, going to be entitled to fifty percent of the billing? Because we provide the staffing for the ambulance.
So, so we do provide the staffing of, that was an arrangement that was made with council and fire company. That's something that would probably have to be readdressed, but I, I try not to get involved with the money aspect of it, because.
It would still stand, and six percent would be included as a, an expense, so we would get fifty percent of the ninety four percent less surprise.
But that's for the BLS services, but without the ALS services.
That would be something that we don't, you don't have access to, you know, with that.
And the ALS services, I don't believe that we're supplying the supply support.
No.
So I hope it's a sixty forty split, since we're paying the cost of R E M P, would we get that forty percent?
Well, no, the forty percent is going to BMSC, the fire half percent, sixty percent. Did you leave in thirty percent of that sixty percent?
I would think they're likely to be showing.
I would think so as well. I think that would have to look at the contracts.
I would say that's something that the work with fire company, if they elected to decide this. Need them to recognize. If there is a change.
And they are planning to come to our executive session next month, so I think that would give us some time to work it through.
Chief, any, um, feedback on the performance thus far of BSMC? And I know they're doing the City of Chester, and I know they have other municipalities. Have you been able to reach out to any of our neighbors to see whether the level of service is up to par, satisfactory?
Uh, so what we have about, uh, BSMC is they're doing the services in the City of Chester, it seems to cover the calls pretty well. Uh, so they have a chase unit, I think, three VLS. Um, they're adding another chase squad. Knowing that they're gonna have to pick up for us if another municipality's on a contract, you're gonna have to get other municipalities to provide service. Because remember, if you have an ambulance license, you can't pick a shoot before you go on, you go where it's down at dispatch. Um, so we're here in Delaware County, and I, I think you're okay. There's, uh, some places in Montgomery, Chester County, that, you know, they had some, some issues or whatever, but I haven't heard anything bad about it.
Yes, if I may add, I had a personal experience with that. I had to send my son via there, so it was pretty much comparable to, uh, Provis.
Now, they also in Chester, they provide BLS and ALS.
Right.
Chief, is there anyone who can check that thing?
So from the municipality standpoint, would be advantageous to us, since a lot of times we're, we're scratching a call in town. Because our ambulance is dispatched out of town. You know, the, if, if we've got the relationship with BSMC, they would be able to backfill to make sure that they, they're able to provide BLS to us while we're out.
They would be able to backfill, but also as a contingency plan, because the long transport times, when we did our disaster declaration, we added a third person, you know, not staff per shift. So that when ambulance out of town, we still had someone to respond in QRS unit, to provide immediate care for our residents, one of the units that responded, one secondary. I think we're providing the best care we can for our residents. We look around the other municipalities, I don't.
Just so the residents know that QRS provides the same levels here, they just can't transport.
So I'm looking ahead at the agenda. I see there's two motions, uh, one to potentially enter an agreement with Trinity, and the other to potentially enter into an agreement with BSMC. From what I'm hearing, with the licensure being tied to the fire company. Would the agreement, would both of these potential firms be tied to the fire company entering into that agreement? Or what separates where the municipality can sign on the dotted line, or what the fire company has to sign on the dotted line?
I, I would say, uh, Councilman Stewart, if the borough, if the, if they want with Trinity, Trinity's gonna build a new town. I think you're going to BSMC because they would be taking their building rights for the ambulance service, it would be in agreement with the fire company. The council's tasking them to provide that, that service.
Okay.
So it looks like I, I, because we are not actually entering into the agreement, there's a motion for the table this evening, and they will put on there in case there was a.
No, no, you're wrong.
I'm sorry, not the, not the Trinity, I apologize.
So Trinity, we are taking about whether to enter into the, if that does not carry, then we are going to vote whether we are in agreement to get into an agreement with.
If it comes to.
BSMC, because if the fire company does not agree, and we need to provide these services, and we need to license our own ambulance. And provide that service, then we can move forward without having to wait till the next council meeting.
But how do we enter into an agreement if we don't have a contract?
We have to know that everyone's on board to be in agreement with them. You would still have to go with the agreements to move forward to make discussion and say it works.
A tentative.
Tentative agreement, that we're all in agreement, yes, to move forward with that.
Move forward with that if the fire company, otherwise we'll wait a whole other month. Or wait a long.
So is it to accept an actual agreement or a tentative agreement, or is it to?
Is to agree to, to use their services.
Okay, what I just said, I think, I think the Trinity agreement is with the municipality. I guess you vote as to whether you want the Trinity agreement or not. If the, the BSMC would be under the ambulance license, they're the ones that are gonna have to decide whether they want to do that.
Right, that's the one I, that's the one I'm questioning. So the BSMC on the, on the agenda, or.
Okay.
And then the fire company doesn't, somewhere we go.
What are we doing?
But how do we vote to enter into an agreement?
To not, and not vote to enter. The option to agree with the. The end.
The way that it's proposed, we agree that that's the way we want to move.
So what, you're voting to put yourself in second position? The fire company decides if they don't want to do it, then we're gonna do it?
Yes.
I mean, I, I, you know, Chief, are you gonna hold it up for a whole other month?
I'm gonna leave it to the listener, he's gonna word that one.
We've already been asking. We know this is a touchy, tricky situation. We're just, we're under the gun here. The, the, the county only provided services for ninety days. We are past that point now, right, chief?
Yes.
And we don't want to leave you without services.
There do not be, no residents being left without services, just if you don't have a contract with someone, we'll be in charge of this.
So we're trying to do the best we can for you to alleviate all that and provide the best services that we can. Being fiscally.
All right, so with that being said, chief, I hate the money that waters, but there are already many of them out. Let's say, I, I know Norbert is a player. So, but if an ALS call comes in and Norbert has to respond to the borough of Eddiestone, Norbert is gonna charge us.
I'm not saying they will, but they could.
Okay, stat does, up regardless. If, if, if a call comes in and stat has to be dispatched to Eddiestone for an ALS call, are we being charged?
They could, they could. And the same thing if BSMC or Trinity were to get any of those places, they.
We're not shining on with anybody.
Right.
That's the problem.
But, but, but not being signed on doesn't mean that if, in the event of a medical emergency, nobody's coming.
No, no, somebody should have come. It's just a matter of whether or not you're gonna pay.
I don't think this is a do-nothing type. Decision here.
You'd date with them and just turn around and actually, and wait for the fire department.
So if there's no agreement within the borough, it's a potential up to two hundred eighty dollars per call for ALS services if they come here.
Yep, that's a potential, but it's not guaranteed. But, but that's what they leave in this agreement, which is why we were asking if everyone was in agreement to what's proposed.
Which way to handle it?
The problem you have is the county services have ended. So it's an emergency situation. The discussion that I was thinking was, the council can approve the proposal and request the fire company to enter into the agreement. If they fail to act, if the council's already approved the proposal, then my Part B would kick in. Whereas the borough council may elect to use your ambulance license and provide the service. I, I think. I'm wary of waiting a month when there's no ALS.
Right.
That's, that's, it's an emergency issue caused by Crozier, we all know the story yet.
Look at the firehouse, make up their mind, just call for other people.
We could have special.
You could do that. My, my biggest fear is that the fire company knows we're in second position, and that's not going to motivate them to act. That's just my opinion.
What they, which would make them motivated to act here?
They'd lose their financial backing. Because if we step in, they don't have financial income.
Then we too wouldn't have an emergency meeting if they give them a week. Like, you're talking about the week.
What was the bulk promotion on the table? We, then both our licenses. I might, I might be with you. Maybe.
We can't have this. It's a financial loss.
I would have to get a special.
Get a week. Next time I check the handbooks, it's still part of the six months. Six months.
Yes, they, they updated us, I think they updated that last. What's the name, what's the name of that company, if that's a joint or a reach out fee? They're all these. There's BSI, BCI, BSMSC, B something, 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 they're all.
Did they take the revenue?
No, it also was September.
That is what we were updated last time, and they, the, the companies.
But in all fairness, they have at least grant from the, the provider where they've been ready to do that.
Suggestion, we give them a week.
I mean, I'm not saying don't enter, I don't want to enter, I just want to know what. I think it's a verb, it's right, I just.
Like I said, we have no ALS. We have no agreement with anybody. We're going to know to go into other bodies now.
You don't know that. That's how you wanted it to go along.
Now you got a roll call.
Spend that kind of money not having services, already putting out BLS, sharing the same financial responsibility going into Trinity. Where other municipalities that don't even pay for BLS are paying the same amount as we are. And now we're paying for two services, where other municipalities only pay for one, and the same amount of money, not getting a break or an offset.
All right, let's move on. How are we doing this?
First, um, I would like to give condolences both to former Councilwoman Ted Ashore and former Councilwoman Buckus and their families. They both had significant losses this week, and, uh, they have our condolences. Members.
Um, the council update, so, um. You know, we've talked about this before, I don't know how much in detail. The road closures that everyone sees, hopefully everyone's getting their CO Reds, and there's some issues with CO Reds, some text messaging from the carriers. It's Pico doing the work, so they're closing it down block by block. They have to replace all of the gas lines undergrounds by the state, they're very old. So now they're putting new pipes down there, that is what the road blocks are for. Once they go through everything, they're gonna come back and start again from the same route. To, um, replace the tie-ins from the new pipes that they're doing into. The houses to your meters, um, anybody that had gas, your meters were running outside last year, two years ago, something like that. Now they're going to put a valve, because it's going to let the BSI that's going from the pipe into your house. So that's phase two, but they're gonna go through phase one, then they're gonna come back to the town, they go through phase two. I don't know if phase two has road closures, but that's where the road closures are right now. If no one is getting the CO Reds, please reach out to us, you can sign up again on the website, um, to get the alerts of where the road closures are, what they're closing, things like that. Um, some of the project updates. Dr. Muller behind the scenes has had multiple meetings, um, regarding the Second Street extension and expansion. He's still working with Penn Terminals. Um, he had a meeting on all his kids with Penn Dot to talk about it, and there was definitely numerous emails between himself. Foxfield and the other businesses that are, um, involved in that Second Street expansion. Um, Barry Calvert, which is the first chocolate factory, continues to move forward. I'm sure there's gonna be an update on that at some point with the engineer's report, so I won't go into too much details. Uh, the Twelve Street project, which I just gave updates on, with Pico, has now come down to Seville. Um. The quarterly reports for the police grant and the Eddiestone park were completed last week. Um, another payment was requested for a police grant of fourteen thousand three hundred forty-six dollars to be spent. Uh, approximately forty-one thousand dollars, uh, that grant money is left to be collected from the state. We just need to go through and make sure that we have final payments, final sign-offs. There are a few punchless items in the building that need to be completed before we can see through. So as we get a little bit further down the road, we can then go back and request some of that money.
Anyone else?
So before we move on, and I, I'm looking at the council minutes for July fourteenth, where Dr. Muller describes Second Street. And I'm, I'm assuming this extension is moving along nicely. What does moving along nicely move? I, I'd asked the engineer last meeting, you know, has, you know, beyond this being a conceptual plan. That's where it's at as far as, from my knowledge.
It does continue to be conceptual plan, however, we've had many, many meetings, uh, back or two this week. And not. Traffic consultant, the borough hire, this is, report will be substantially completed currently. So we've had meetings with, uh, the Harry Calvert folks, we've had meetings with Penn Dot, the district's sixth leader at Penn Dot. There's been many more meetings. Foxfield folks have been in meetings, so. There's a lot of detail involved with extending it, uh, the, the Second Street, complicated with the multiple users, the end users. They may or may not be paying for the, the extension and value of that, and the permitting process. Still working with the Foxfield folks to obtain permission and/or obtain the legal right of way to go through their property.
That's kind of leading into my question, is is that, you know, my knowledge is, every, the footprint of where this proposed extension is, is all private property.
Correct.
So, so there, there, there's either going to be a private-public partnership to make this happen, or combination. That's, that's kind of the two avenues that I, that I see. Are, are we, are we leaning towards the first, or we're gonna get all of the stakeholders to cody up, so to speak, and make this happen? Or is this the, one of the municipalities gonna have to take it on their chin and go for a combination?
I think it's a little too early. Terms of power in that property. It is being discussed. Uh, Harry Calvert, uh, has, is, is also a tenant in the Foxfield property. So they've had some, uh, conversations amongst the two, those two parties. Determine whether or not their lease is going to be effective and how. Harry Calvert has assured us that they are in favor of this extension.
Okay.
Which is a, which was a big plus.
That's a big plus, that's absolutely a big plus.
There are some more.
Does Cal, does Calvert own or does Calvert lease?
They lease.
So, so even though Calvert says they'd like to do it, they're not a property.
Yeah, but they're looking to expand, which is also good.
They look at the buy, or they look at the lease?
They have, they have taken interest in buying the property.
They want to change it into making it chocolate, not just versi.
Yeah, I, I, I know that there's a proposal for another, you know, we'll call it a medium to larger size warehouse down there, nothing that's the size of, uh, the old Alliance or Pushman property now, but. So there's, there's, you know, I understand that there's plans that they want to start producing chocolate as opposed to just roasting cocoa beans. But.
And terminals is also agreed that they will support this financially. We do not have that covered out, as far as exactly how much, regarding how we determine how much. We are also working with the, uh, the, uh, Foxfield folks about the Congrail, uh, crossing. It's gonna be a very complicated process. Penn Dot is in support of the Congrail crossing, and they're gonna be our advocate as far as pushing that through. They're gonna partner with Justice Market as far as getting Congrail permits. Penn Dot would like to see this done.
So there's gonna be one crossing or two?
One.
One.
There's an existing private.
So there's an existing private crossing that's gonna be incorporated into this extension if the extension has.
Correct.
I know we received, uh, council received an update on August fourth with more detailed information on what I gave, but that's why I defer to JP for some of it. Because I know with certain things, with legal aspects. There we are.
Penn Dot also is showing off.
Eddiestone wants to stop.
Whenever it is, county wants it gone, and then you throw Penn Dot once it's gone, that's a big help.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I've also spent a lot of time with Penn Dot to know that, you know, today it's moving along nicely, and tomorrow it's cloudy with a threat rain.
True, I mean, we, I feel the same way, but I think we do have a moving along nicely feel. That we, that we are definitely gaining some attention, positive attention from all, all parts. And we, and we will, you know, expect that we will be applying for a multi-modal grant. With all, with, with D C D D.
Thank you.
All right, from the middle up. Public form eight. Public form eight. Three meetings again, there are three one, um, needless to bear, the council will allow that, that is seen. Um, thank you. Um, who's the reason for stopping the workshop? That's what you guys call it.
Our workshop meetings. Oh, there was no attendance.
From residents.
Residents, council. And then what would happen with the regular meetings is, we would just repeat everything that we would say over, or some people even had said that they didn't realize that it was a public meeting, so then we started to try and advertise that it was a public meeting, and we still didn't have residents attending.
Okay.
And we had, we had one reaction in the forum.
Yeah, we were lucky enough to have the meeting. So when do you guys have an opportunity to discuss everything that you're discussing now at your executive session? Or are you having other meetings throughout the month?
No.
So are you just taking hours to go through?
Well, I mean, sometimes, like, a liaison will come together with other council members that are on the committee, or vice versa, if you need to converse with someone else, like, what's going on over here, how can we get a solution here? So as long as there's not, you know, more than three, you're fine.
Okay, so there's never.
Yeah, that would be a problem.
Right, I understand that. Um, so I saw on last week's, last month's agenda that there was a motion to hire a borough manager, and I see it again.
Yeah, she had some, um, some personal issues that came up, and the schedule did not fit her schedule anymore.
Okay. Um, Dr. Muller, not personal, um, Dr. Muller's salary at a hundred fifty dollars an hour, is there a maximum that he's going to be paid?
That's not, that's not what he's getting.
Is that in there in the office read that? I think I did read that.
It was option of a flat salary, a flat monthly salary, or an hourly rate. Council opted for the flat salary rate.
How much?
Two thousand dollars a month. Oh, sorry, I missed, I apologize, twenty-five hundred dollars a month. And I can tell you, over the last three weeks, he's put in over ninety-six hours. It's like a firm actor, other than some of the personnel issues, he's still handling, trying to help handle a lot of the day-to-day stuff remotely, plus all of the projects that he's working on.
Okay. You guys did discuss the maintenance contract. So, just a question for you, and I'm, I'm not sure, because I'm not familiar with, um, administration side of labor, I am with the union side. Are they, like, they've been waiting for a while for the contract, right? So are they going to be paying any retro monies, or?
That depends on what's resolved, and that's, whatever's associated. Typically, that is the way that it works since retro.
So how long do you guys think, I know you can't give me a definite answer, but how long do you think it's going to take for them to get a contract?
Whenever both sides come to an agreement.
Well.
Wait, which agreement, I know, wait, hold on a second.
We're talking about highway.
Oh, okay.
Who, who's over highway, as a matter of fact? Would that you?
Over highway as far as on the negotiations?
No, the council person over high, um, um, council, as committee chair, on committee chair. Okay, and who was it before you?
Uh, are you ready?
The. Um, health department reports, I've never heard. Is there never any?
There are. So we don't give out the actual report, it's just the number of reports, and if they cash or fail when they're re-inspected, that comes from code. The last, we don't always have a health report, because they're once a year, so it's just the businesses that are in the family actually.
You should even know, there, no, I should, no, I should, oh. Um, any idea what's going on with the Dunkin' Donuts, the gas station down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're further along than what we have been since, I don't know, twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, I think. Twenty fourteen, I think, is when that conception first came to light. We're further than we ever have been.
And if you would let them give their reports, it might answer a lot of your questions.
Okay.
Well, they can answer when they can. I mean, we need to. Um, downwash, that's what the chief briefly about that, and you can wait. Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, before we move forward, just to touch on what this, uh, Mary spoke about with the health, uh, department. Where, where are we at, Mr. Swisher, with the mall, with Delaware County, opting out, of using the Delaware County Health Department? I haven't heard anything about whether that's moving forward, whether we've had any hearings. I know it's not just Eddie Stone, it's multiple municipalities.
Yeah, so, so the borough and the other municipality to, to the county to opt out of the new county health board, won at trial, and then an appeal was taken by the county to the Commonwealth Court, Commonwealth Court being the federal court. The Commonwealth Court affirmed the decision of the trial court judge. The county has now stated, uh, formally that they are not pursuing it further, but the county is also supposed to start reaching out to the individual townships and boroughs. So the case for all intents and purposes is over, and the townships, uh, are not required to be able to tell.
Ju- just so everybody understands, too, uh, with the county health board, alls they wanted to do was inspect the restaurants, the businesses, and the bars, that kind of stuff.
And they raised.
If you had a problem where, a sewer problem, in your, in your house, or a, you know, an apartment building, that, you know, an overflow, or something where we would have need of a health department, then folks, whatever it might be, they weren't coming out for it. That was not, they only wanted to do the things that they had to charge money for. And, and the worst part about it is, they opened an office over here in.
Baldwin Towers.
Baldwin Towers, and didn't even get an occupancy certificate when they opened from the borough. That was really bad.
Oh. And they doubled the fees on all the businesses here.
Yeah.
It, it was more than twice what we were paying as a municipality. So I'm glad we were successful. Alright, professional reports, Brinkley Simpson.
We want to fly it to hundred ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and three cents in deposits received to J. Perrin Bank General and deposit quarter funds. Sure, expenditures of four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and thirty-three cents disbursed, two hundred and eight thousand three hundred and seventy dollars in wages. All bank accounts of which we are aware of have been reconciled through July. If you have any questions for Brinkley Simpson? Hold on, uh, we do not have a third representative.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. The, the Lighthouse Hall, the HBAC, we expect to have those contract documents ready for advertising within this week. The bidding advertisers will mandate a pre-bid site meeting with the intention of the contractor bidding on both alternate. Place, where we care. So we need to schedule that, that site, uh, opportunity for them to stop by and imagine all. Look in the attic, and of course. Within the flooring, we've submitted the CoStar bid documents from advocates, uh, to OHCD for review and approval. They had a couple of edits that were made, they were, they were returned, and I expect this contract to be signed within two weeks. Uh, the waterfront parcel, Remy Kibber, has completed the phase two report. There is good news, the sampling did not identify any components of non-residential correct contact standard. They are not recommending any further investigation of that store still at this time. Uh, four contractor has completed the storm water pipe, uh, cleaning. They owe us some data, we're going to compile that data and update the storm sewer maps. We still need to correct pipe, so. Uh, we discussed the Harry Calibit Second Street extension, I can answer any more questions if there are any. And as far as Dunkin' Donuts, the applicant has hired a contractor, and the contractor did start work. He, he has installed erosion center control measures, um, and he's moving very, very slowly. Very slow. Maybe he needs to call the correct. So I do have to check on that periodically. Uh, if there is a, a blowout of the EMS measures, the erosion center control measures, they do respond and fix it, but they, there's some news.
Thank you.
And that's all, I have no questions.
Anyone have any questions for JP or engineering? Chief, would you mind giving fire EMS reports?
No, uh, fire report for July twenty twenty-five, four fires to the extension, only one fire alarm. Two rush fires, one investigation, one field fire, nine alarms, six by day, three by night, members responding, twenty-seven average, triple three. EMS report for July twenty twenty-five, fifty-nine clear EMS, five-six calls, analyzed, had a standing EMS, aided by ambulance, PRS. Three EMS scratches due to crew being committed to other calls. Three one calls from seven to nineteen hundred, two calls motion to seven, animals twelve down fifty calls, PRS twelve handled, six calls, transit fifty thirty-six. Respectfully filed in GMS.
Anyone have any questions or arguments?
Chief, and Jessica, I don't know if you would have the answer or not, um, on the fire report, I know that we use this paint stamp, the E and P paint stamp, a lot of times to supplement the, getting the truck out. Uh, just looking at the data, does that data, does that include the paint stamp, or does it exclude the paint stamp? So, forgive me, I went to temple, so my mathematical skills are not as good as they should be. But if there's three paint staff in the station, and there's three people responding to the fire truck, does that tell me that there was no participation of a volunteer on any of the fire calls for the month at all?
So, first of all, say, did the reports are handed, so I'm not quite sure where the data comes from, but I'm sure that the data is including the paint stamp. Now, we do have openings for you guys to shift, but sometimes we can't, there may be a time where it's like. So, I would say that it would be a joint effort involving the paint staff, but I would say probably.
So the information that I received, when I actually, when I asked the fire company that question is, yes, the data does include the paint stamp. And the data is more reflective to the paint staff of getting out when it was two. Now that it's three, that's typically a fire, a volunteer fire member.
So one fire, one fire member.
On average. They're looking for volunteers.
There's no health report included in tonight's agenda. Police report.
Police report for July twenty twenty-five, uh, five hundred and twenty-one volt service, a hundred and five between, a hundred and eighty-seven between, two hundred and twenty-nine between, uh, sixteen hundred.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone have any questions regarding that report? Tim, do you have anything that needs to be discussed? Moving on to action items. I have a motion to approve the minutes from July fourteenth, for a company. I have a motion, may I have a second? I have a motion made by Councilwoman Bolton, and a second by Councilwoman Bannon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report, including bank reconciliations for the month of July twenty twenty-five, as presented by Brinkley Simpson? So, I have a motion made by Councilwoman Walker, and a second by Councilwoman Bannon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to table the next one, since we do not have a code report tonight. May I have a motion to accept the engineer's report as presented by JP Kelly for the month of July two thousand twenty-five?
Sure.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Bolton, and seconded by Councilwoman Bannon, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to accept the fire report for the month of June and July two thousand?
Madam President, you gotta table the June, and then table.
Can I have a motion to accept the fire report for the month of July two thousand twenty-five, as presented by Chief, or our Chief Allen?
Sure.
Sorry. I have a motion made by Councilwoman Bolton, signed by Councilwoman Perry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to accept the EMS report for the month of July two thousand twenty-five, as presented by Chief Chesky? All in favor? I'm sorry. You guys, give me the motion. I have a motion by Councilwoman Bannon, may I have a second? Councilwoman Perry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We've already marked the firehouse, that they're two months behind on reports now.
Because I feel like they owe us nine, too, so.
No, I think maybe, I think you know what it is.
Was it April?
No, they gave us two last time, it's like every other, they're giving us two, yeah, but this one, they forgot to.
I'll address it with the word.
Alright. May I have a motion to accept the police report for the month of July two thousand twenty-five, as presented by Chief?
Sure.
Question made by Councilwoman Bolton, and seconded by Councilwoman Bannon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the nuisance ordinance six eight three dash two zero two five? Let's get a little back straight here first with the, uh. I do have it. Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
So this ordinance, um, shall be known as nuisance property abatement ordinance. The purpose and intent of this ordinance is to promote health and safety and welfare of residents by identifying and addressing properties that repeatedly deserve the peace, pose as a public safety risk, or require disproportionate municipal resources. This ordinance shall be applied uniformly and in a manner of consistent with constitutional rights, including due process and protections under the Federal Fair Housing Act. Okay, Tim. Would you like to just let us know what, well, I don't know that people knew what it was before.
Oh, okay.
She's saying maybe we should just get what, say what's being updated.
No, I, I asked, I said, do you want to, what I asked was, do you want to read the whole thing, or do you want to ask him to give an update of the changes and updates? Because this is not a new order.
That's a new word, that's a brand new word.
Oh, it's a brand. I thought it was, I'm off today.
As you said, this ordinance, borough, borough means the borough of Eddie Stone, Pennsylvania. Nuisance property means a property within any rolling twelve-month period that three or more, has three or more police responses or offenses that pose a threat to public health or safety, including, but not limited to, drug trafficking, illegal weapons possession, disorderly conduct, assaults, prostitution, or other criminal offenses that present a pattern of serious disruption, or documented violations of local ordinances, example, property maintenance, noise ways, that will result in three or more enforcement actions or citations. Responsible party means any person or legal entity that owns, manages, leases, or otherwise is responsible for the property. Except intent, I'm sorry, except incident, means any call for service made by a victim or someone seeking emergency assistance in good faith, including calls related to domestic violence, sexual assault, or medical emergencies, these shall not count as nuisance incidents. The determination of a nuisance property, the borough manager or their designee, shall review records to determine whether a property meets the definition of a nuisance property. If so, the borough shall, in su- If so, the borough shall issue a written notice of determination to the responsible party, which shall include the address of the property, the list of the qualifying incidents with dates and brief descriptions. A statement explaining that the property has been determined to be a nuisance property. The notice of the rights to request a hearing within fifteen business days. Section five, hearing and appealing rights. A responsible party may request a hearing before the borough council or designated hearing officer within fifteen business days of receipt of this notice. The hearing shall be scheduled within thirty days of the request. The borough must demonstrate by preponderance of evidence that the property meets the criteria under this ordinance. Responsible party shall have the right to present evidence, including evidence of the mitigation, extenuating circumstances, or errors. Section six, made a plan. If no appeal is filed, if determination is upheld after the hearing, the borough may require the responsible party to submit and implement an abatement plan, which may include, but is not limited to, hiring private security or increasing lighting, eviction, or lease enforcement consistent with tenant rights under state and federal law, physical repairs to the addressed property's conditions, ongoing communication with borough officials. Enforcement and penalties, failure to implement the approved abatement plan may result in fines, not to exceed a thousand dollars per day for continued noncompliance, subject to APS three, three oh one dash, I'm sorry, dot one, dot ETS, whatever, and the municipal lien proceedings or other lawful remedies under the Pennsylvania law. The boroughs shall not penalize or otherwise take action against any person proceeding emergency services or for being a victim of a crime. Nondiscrimination, the ordinance shall be enforced in a manner consistent with Pennsylvania fees constitutions, the Fair Housing Act, the American with Disabilities Act, and all other applicable civil rights laws. The boroughs shall not take action based on the identity, status, or protected class of any person, nor in a manner that would have a disparate impact on any protected group. In any section clause or provision of this ordinance is found to be invalid or unconstitutional, such findings shall not affect the remaining provisions. This ordinance shall take effect upon enactment as provided by law. The ordinance repeals any other ordinance that we've had before. Any questions? May I have a motion to approve the nuisance ordinance six eight three dash twenty twenty five?
Sure. Sergeant.
I have a motion and a, by Councilman Bolton and a second by Councilman Bannon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're amending the next ordinance, so what is the difference? This is the new one, okay. So the part that's being amended.
My recollection, my recollection, I remember.
There is, it says it right here. This ordinance repeals and to.
It's repealing the other ones.
Right, but we had one before, it wasn't for a new. Well, no, that's.
No, because this repeals it, that's why it's not being amended. It's repealing, it's replacing.
Yeah, I understand that, but there was, there was one before, it's just different.
Yeah. It wasn't, it wasn't enforceable, the other one.
Which is, that's fine, I just.
Okay, moving on. The difference in this ordinance is any acceptable method of testing duly performed pursuant, pursuant to this subsection shall be valid for one, the period of one year. Intention of this part contemplates a transfer and or settlement that does not occur, thereby allowing seller to use the same test within the prescribed one year time period. So what that means is if you're selling your house and for some reason you have this sewer lateral shack and you have it hammered and then, for some reason, they don't get the mortgage and the sale falls through and you have to put your house back on the market. That's still good for a year, you don't have to go and pay and get it tested again. So that's what's being amended, all right? Does anyone have any questions on that? Move on. They have a motion to amend this sewer lateral ordinance for six eight four twenty twenty five. I have a motion by Councilman Bannon, seconded by Councilman Bolton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, just as a sidebar before we move forward, as Penn, Penn Vest currently has a program for homeowners that they will give a very low interest loan for the replacement or rehabilitation of your sanitary sewer laterals, so, um, you know, being in Eddie Stone, knowing how old these laterals are, uh, I could pass that information, uh, to either yourself or to your designee and then you get, you see fit with adding it to the website or anything.
Also, Aqua has also been putting away, they have been sending out notifications that you can do a like monthly installment with them.
It's like a warranty.
Yeah.
Exactly. They like to actually repair the work and do anything when the plumber, I don't know what the rates are, but they also do the payment program on the plumber. I see that at some residence.
The interest rate for Lenda plumber versus the interest rate for Penn Vest.
Yeah, that's what I said, I, I have, I have no idea what either one are, I just write it. I don't know what their requirements are though either, like just Penn Vest has certain requirements from a financial standpoint or like.
There is, there is absolutely no financial cap.
We're at eight oh eight, just split news now.
We have a motion, we have a second.
We already did it.
Yep, we were about to discuss.
I didn't interrupt, like you said, before you move forward, I wanted to just add, Penn Vest has a program, that's all.
And Aqua offers the insurance, it's like eighteen dollars a year for the internal and external lines that help offset some of the costs if you have that insurance.
Okay, moving on, this is the agreement that we discussed last month. Um, the five, it was actually six municipalities, including ourselves, um, that were coming into an agreement trying to find a solution for ALS services. Last month, we had it on our agenda. We only got one motion, there was not a, a second to that motion. I was asked by the other municipalities to take a vote on it again, which is why we are here.
You want to do it, you want me to do it? I'll do it. Put it on the table.
You're gonna put that on the table?
Yeah. Madam President, I make a motion that we reject the proposal from truly ALS for.
I don't know, should I put that?
So it's not gonna say.
So a motion to reject by Councilman Stewart and seconded by Councilman Bolton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam President, who was the second on that?
That was Mr. Bolton. All right, so we are going to table the next agreement, um, if maybe we will have a special meeting for that. Right, that's what we decided. We're tabling that and decided to have a special meeting if needed.
It's your meeting.
No, I'm asking what we decided.
Your meeting.
Okay. Now, a motion to table the BL, BS, uh, MC ALS agreement. I don't need a motion to table it, I just need someone to table it because I can't table it.
Are we going to, are we going to give the firehouse a kind of a notice?
Yeah, I guess I can.
Weak notice? Weak notice or?
So you missed a lot too, basically. Yeah, basically, yeah, that's what they were saying, they wanted to. Councilman Stewart, who's being so coy right now, wanted to get the firehouse.
That's one of the nicest things that's been said about the end here.
Well, I, I'm trying to turn the leaf here. No, I mean, I'm fine with tabling it, I just want to know what direction we're moving here.
Oh, Madam President, can we table?
Thank you. Especially because you were the one that insisted it be on there. Yes, thank you. All right, let me work it all out. All right, can I have a motion to accept Officer Q's resignation?
No order.
Sergeant.
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Walker and a second by Councilman Bolton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to allow me to meet the Civil Service Board?
Madam President, before you call for the motion, I just have, from a vernacular standpoint, is it's, as a former chair of the Civil Service Board, it's council's responsibility when there's a vacancy in the police department to charge the Civil, uh, Service Commission, uh, with meeting. So it should not be asking the chief to reach out and set something up, it should be this board taking action to invoke the Civil Service Commission to fill a vacancy and then the Civil Service Chair, whoever that is, would reach out to the chief and to the solicitor for the Civil Service Commission to set up a meeting and start the testing process. Yeah, I just want the board to charge, to re, to charge the Civil Service Commission with the responsibility of starting the process. Unless you see any, any different characteristics.
To invoke the Civil Service Board.
I like to say charge. I'm charging the Civil Service Commission with the responsibility of filling the vacancy in the police department. So they can begin the process. Who's the chair? Am I still on the board or did you remove me from the board? Madam President. No, I was on the board. I'm, President Bannon had me on the board.
President Bannon didn't make that.
You were, you, yes, no, you were the alternative, you were the second alternative.
I was, I'm still, I'm still a member.
You were the second alternative.
I'm still a member. I get my invite to the meeting. I may not have voting rights, but I, but I'm part of the process.
So some of us may even have, uh, charged Civil Service Commission to start a process of hiring new police officers, is that correct, Mr. Stewart?
That's perfect.
Who's your meeting? It's Karen. And then the first alternative is.
Wait, wait. Matt can't be on the board because there's only one member of council that could be on the board.
They're missing from the firehouse. Judy Fakanda.
Judy. Yeah, Judy.
And Karen and Mr. Wiley.
And me.
And then Sarah's the first alternative.
How long were the terms for?
Are they staggered?
Yes. Yes, two, four, and six. And now you rotate off. One's for two, you're one's for four, you're one's for six.
He wrote it. Did part of that motion include, uh, giving permission to contact FX Riley for vehicle supply?
That's just a matter of, whoever the chair of the Civil Service Commission, once, once council takes action to charge the Civil Service Commission with the responsibility of filling the vacancy, now, now you've given Miss Reeves the, uh, permission or, or actually the responsibility of contacting the solicitor, John Fix Riley. And then John Fix Riley and the chairman will determine a meeting, that meeting will be advertised in the newspaper, general circulation, and then they sit and crunch the rules.
All right, let's try this again. Can I have a motion to charge the Civil Service Commission? I'm gonna leave it at that.
The motion change was charge Civil Service Commission to start.
That's long-winded, just like.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Thanks.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion to promote a public works worker to foreman. I thought we weren't naming.
You have to name it.
And it's, doesn't fall through.
Did we talk about it? Did it seem pretty?
Yes. May I have a motion to promote Les Clemmons to public works foreman?
The word?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Walker and a second by Councilman Bannon.
Madam President, before the call for action, what happened to the old foreman?
He walked off the job on Tuesday afternoon. Called her.
So he quit?
He said, nice working with you.
Did we get a letter of resignation from him or just, but pending the job? Send him a letter? Should we send him?
The conversation was had. So, um, even though it's my meeting, can we, uh, take a call to order now?
Call the order.
Can we, can we take the vote now, since we have both motions?
I just had a question before.
I know, you said before I took the call to order, can we now take?
You answered my question, I asked what happened to the old, the old foreman.
I know, but if you would show up on executive meetings, you would know all this information. You do this every council meeting. Every council meeting you do this.
I know that he walked off the job, I just wanted to hear you say that he quit, because I had heard rumors that he was fired. Now I'm, now I'm getting confirmation that he quit. As long as he quit, I'm fine. For the guns without saying that if you, you know, there's no one single individual on council that has authority to fire anybody, it's the council body that hires and the council body that fires. So I just wanted clarification, it's on the record. And it's true, I apologize for taking past eight fifteen, Madam President.
Well, some of us have been here for an hour already. A second. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to table the next motion. They have a motion to hire the part-time borough manager that we interviewed earlier. I didn't, and now why are we citing the names?
Because if you put the names on the agenda.
Agenda, and there's more than one candidate that you can't change or you have to vote to amend the agenda. If you need a line and then name them publicly, then you can add them in there.
The other issue is, is that if you put the name on the agenda, it means the council's already made the decision.
This way, this way. If you're kind of slightly hiring a part-time borough manager, nobody knows. Somebody offers a name for the position and then the council.
So the person that's motioning has to motion who they would like for that position, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to motion Jen Hop for the part-time borough manager position.
I have a motion, may I have a second? Motion was made by Councilwoman Walker, Jennifer Hop, seconded by Councilman Bolton, all in favor?
Madam President, before the call for action, can we just, uh, make it a matter of the record, what is the hourly rate that we're giving this hall? We pay by the hour, we pay by, so we're paying a salary. Salary is? Thousand?
A year.
Per year?
No benefits?
No benefits and the number of hours per week expected?
Twenty four to thirty. Flexible within the pay period. So if there's a council meeting and they need to be here longer for the council meeting, then they would be perplexed at that time of the pay period.
And this is a employee, employer W two relationship and not a contract employee?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Did you say forty one thousand?
We, Mr. Stewart's got your.
Chief, forty one thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
It is a part-time position with no benefits. The expectation is twenty four to thirty hours per week.
Okay, thank you.
And it is a W two position, so she is considered an employee of municipality.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Any idea when you'll start?
Yay.
Perfect. How about a letter, Walker, Walker letter already?
She's not starting.
I have a motion for adjourn. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.